Before we start the meeting though, I want to address the statement set made on the open lines last Friday. That I think needs to be corrected about our budgeting process, line item appropriations for budgets, how those things are done. I listened to it and I was not very happy with what I heard and how it was presented that the board was not being prudent or very exact how we budget, how we provide information to the public about the budget. I think that we've been relatively good at that over the last number of years. In fact, we just received our audit report earlier this morning. We were complimented for what we've done in the past and present, how the budget is set up and how the public has accessed all of the information that we have available to us. Since they know what's going on as far as the financial part of the budget is concerned. I asked Dennis Butler to prepare a statement to rebut some of the things that we said and hopefully those things will be corrected when we go ahead with the rest.
Our company.
Does he need a microphone to be recorded? Who reads his statement?
I probably should read it up there.
Denny, do you want a microphone?
You're welcome.
To read it.
I can actually read from back here.
Well, pick it up on the video. Okay. All right.
I'm gonna read through this here and then whatever you afterwards. After due consideration, thought, I believe the response needs to occur from statements made on a radio talk show last Friday morning. First, there was a statement made that revenues such as federal prisoner care is not budgeted but goes into cash reserves. For the past thirteen fiscal years, Woodbury County has budgeted all revenues that are known by departments and divisions to offset tax asking. Revenues are reflected in our proposed budget workbook from which the board's supervisor works with. It is concerning to some individuals who are unaware of this documentation has existed for thirteen years in our budget workbook. Next statement made by the sheriff, the Black Hawk County budgeted five million more than the Woodbury County for the entire sheriff's budget fiscal year 2014. Actually, the Black Hawk Sheriff's budget was $2,972,649 higher than Woodbury County Sheriff's budget. The communication budget was removed from the Black Hawk budget to make a fair comparison with the Woodbury County budget. With all due respect, a more depth look has to be taken. First, Woodbury County ranks sixth in population, that's by the estimated 2012 census. On a per capita basis, which is per person basis, the current fiscal year sheriff's budget ranks fourth in the state at $99.43 per capita. What that means, we take the total budgets divided in the population to figure out how much we're spending per capita. Next, second, when taking total taxable evaluations into consideration, Woodbury County ranks tenth. Ten, Woodbury County's tax base exceeds, Woodbury County's, or, I'm sorry. Black Hawk County's tax base exceeds Woodbury County's tax base by $1,594,354,898. So when you take the 350 tax rate cap kinds of differential tax base, Black Hawk does generate $5,582,422 in additional taxes in the general basic fund. This is why Black Hawk did budget almost three million more in the sheriff's department. Last, when reviewing the top thirteen counties by population, all the counties except one is staying within the 350 cap set by the code of idol. This exception being Dallas County, $3.16,000, which is lower than the 350 cap. So in conclusion, the county is transparent showing budget evidence by department division. The board supervisor provides the sheriff a budget within a county's ability to raise taxes in the general basic fund. Also, what really stands out is that Woodbury County is tax based fourth, is reranked tenth in the state while the county ranks sixth in population. The board of supervision, all city councils are diligently working to attract new businesses to the county in their respective cities. Evidence of these efforts are given, industries choosing due to major expansion in the county and safer industries also due to major expansion along with many other business expansions. Tax base growth happens over years, not overnight. The last fourteen years, Woodbury County has received a certificate of achievement from a government finance officer association. In order to receive a certificate of achievement, government must publish an easily readable and officially organized certified annual financial report. This report is satisfied both the US GAAP and applicable legal requirements. The report has received an unqualified opinion and now an unmodified opinion as they did change it from unqualified to unmodified. An unqualified clean opinion is issued when the auditor states without reservation that the financial statements presented in the form of a GAAP which is generally accepted by council.
Okay, thank you. I thought that we needed to go ahead.
On the third sheet there, it is a comparison of the top thirteen counties. The reason I did thirteen, you can't really compare full plan and stop to Woodbury. So I did go thirteen counties identified census, which I got from the Census Bureau. Then from the department manager, I got the total general basic tax rate, the tax base, if you look though for thirteen counties, the tax asking by general basic fund, and then the total budgets, which includes all budgets over all funds. And then on the bottom, I put our rank in the top thirteen counties per capita, which is taking the sheriff's budget into the population. No, I'm sorry. Yes, that's taking the budget into the per capita or census. That's the first how we ranked the one thirteen. And the sheriff's budget is per capita, so that's how we ranked there, per person or per capita. And then our rank in the top thirteen by tax valuation, which we're rating tenth. That's just the data to be read.
All right, anything else? Any comments, concerns?
The big point is we're tax based fund.
Right.
And there is no desire to exceed the cap and that takes special circumstance to exceed the cap. I believe quite a few years ago, we did put this to the vote of people, we got beat nine to one. So, you can do it two ways, you can do it by vote of people or you can do it by a special hearing. If the board's whole desires, the public wants us to raise taxes.
Right.
To raise the taxes from what we got in general stuff and if we, you know, gave the sheriff everything he needed, it would raise our taxes by about seventy-five cents per thousand or seventy-five dollars, a hundred thousand dollar taxable house. That's just the county size. The city's four million dollars short and where the school comes in, who knows? So, it's a real issue and it's unfortunate. Takes years to get us back to where we should be.
We have a lot of issues to talk about, pump about, you know, this is the budget that they said earlier this morning, that laying out, was concerned about security, the courthouse, that all had to be considered and we will consider that and do our best to make every employee and client that comes into our facility safe. But we have to do it within certain budgetary needs. It's hard for us to generate new dollars unless we raise taxes.
I personally, I'm not interested at all in exceeding the cap or going before the people and asking, I know I talked to one of my constituents who's on social security and the raise is 1.5% this year. And as I thought about the way the increase in taxes that we're going to have outside of not even considering your budget, these are just our employee benefits, it's going to take up a good portion of that increase in social security. So, going around the county and talking to people who are having a hard time making it, we have to be so careful about putting an additional burden on our working families. So I just want to be on record as saying I'm not interested in increasing the cap.
Let's move on. Did we, uniform patrol, I mean, we did that last week.
Yeah, but as we move on here, with the help of Greg, we've come up with some changes that'll help in the general basic fund. The first change is they did move a uniform patrol officer from rural basic to general basic.
That's on page forty-eight, forty-nine.
It'll be on page forty-eight, yes. So, in so doing, talking to Greg, we are moving a sergeant back from general basic to rural basic.
What did I add to that?
Well, it's gonna be several items, because you got to include the benefits, the wage, everything like that. So when we get down to the bottom line, moving a sergeant over from general basic to rural basic will help us by ninety thousand, I believe ninety thousand some odd dollars. But it'll increase the taxes in rural basic. At least we're getting back to the right number of people. Okay, when it comes to overtime, let's go to page number fifty, which is investigations.
Wait, 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 wait.
You're getting, you're bouncing too much.
Okay, you want to know where we cut?
Where we cut on forty-eight, forty-nine?
On forty-eight, we're cutting a line item ten-fourteen, sixty-three thousand seventy-nine dollars. We already, on line item ten-fourteen.
You're eliminating that line item.
So, we're transferring that dollar amount to rural basic. We're making sure we have eight deputies in rural basic. Currently, we have seven. There should be eight.
So you move, how much?
Sixty-three thousand seventy-nine dollars. From this line item to the line item in rural basic. Okay, the other line item's affected is FICA.
Wait, wait, wait.
Okay.
There was zero in that budget last year.
So that's on ten-zero-zero-nine, one-zero-zero-nine. We're talking line item ten-fourteen.
There was zero in that budget last year.
No. We're looking on page forty-eight.
That's right.
Ten-fourteen.
Go to line ten-fourteen, that's organized employees, that's all of our uniform patrol deputies. We're taking, the zero you're looking at supervisor.
Okay, that's right, that's.
Okay, so we're taking sixty-three thousand seventy-nine dollars from there, moving to the uniform patrol and rural basic. The next five, six line items will be affected for FICA, which is line zero-one-one-one-six. That'll be minus forty-seven hundred eleven dollars. Line item one-one-one-seven, IFRS, six thousand two hundred thirty-two dollars. Employed hospitalization is one-one-one-eight, that'll be fifteen thousand seven oh eight. Line item one-one-two-one is life insurance, that'll be minus twenty-eight dollars. Line item eleven-twenty-three will be three fifty-three minus. And line item eleven-twenty-six will be one thirty-nine. That totals ninety thousand dollars and some odd dollars.
So you had over ninety?
What?
The file total was ninety?
Ninety thousand. My idea to you, I got it right here. Ninety, ninety thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars. Really rounds off to ninety thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. That's going from general basic to rural basic. So in other words, that, if we're say a million one twenty-three, say a million dollars short, we just cut off ninety thousand here, so we moved over to rural basic. For rural basic, we got ability to tax for it there, general basic, we don't. That helps some of our shortfall there.
We moved a sergeant over, that is.
That is a sergeant Becker.
Right, but sergeant's problematic.
Ten-sixteen.
Okay, we can, okay, I ain't gonna address that one there. I'll just move a sergeant, you know, sixty-three down to sergeant.
That was when I was asking the question on.
Yes, I'm sorry.
It was zero and now it's got two people in it.
Now it's gonna have one. Cause one same move, two.
Or this next year will have two.
Well then, where's Becker budgeting from?
Right now, it's in the general patrol.
General patrol, yeah, that's, page forty-eight, which is uniform patrol.
Right, and you want us to move them into rural.
Yes. So that'll leave one sergeant in this particular budget and then move the one sergeant over to rural basic. You're still gonna have same number of people, same number of sergeant, it's the funding mechanism. That were trying to help the general basic. The next item we talked about was overtime.
Wait a minute, Larry, did you have something?
This, I'm still not clear.
Okay.
You still have one additional person in there. Is that right or wrong? What's that mean?
Larry, I think you're getting confused, the ten-zero-zero-nine is a zero amount. Go down two spots to organize supervisor.
Yeah, that's where you are.
That's where I'm at. But it's showing last year was zero, nobody in there.
Mm-hmm.
Now this year, it's showing a hundred and twenty-six thousand, but we're deducting sixty-three thousand from that. That still leaves one person in there.
Right.
Okay, that one person's coming on ten-fourteen.
Yeah, I guess.
Cause see, you're, here's ten-fourteen.
Forty-eight.
Cause we've got different numbers than you do. You just said, what was he?
You do?
Yes.
Do you want to look at mine?
Is yours the same as mine?
Mine is the same as yours. He's looking at.
But you're saying that that person is coming out of ten-fourteen?
Yeah, right here, for this year.
Is that updated?
Yes, that's right, that's right for us.
Is it updated since you talked to him?
Right.
Okay. We don't have an updated sheet.
So when you add the two lines together, you come back almost exactly with the six-seventy-eight.
Just a minute, did you answer your question?
No. I still want to know, now I don't know whose sheet is right or who's updated and who's not, but in line item ten-four, or ten-sixteen, supervisory organized, is there a dollar figure in there?
Not for this current year.
Not for this current year. For the budget year we're doing now, is there a person in there?
Yes.
Yes.
Wait, no, wait, no, wait.
Ten-on-one, is there a sergeant in there? There is some. Yes, there'll be Panchal and Henixon, there will be two next year.
Two under ten-sixteen.
We're taking one out, we're taking Becker that was quoted here.
I don't care about names, I just want the numbers.
We're taking what was budgeted, the gene gave me, from, what, the individual's actually budgeted in ten-fourteen in fiscal year 2014. How he's gonna be budgeted out of ten-sixteen is a sergeant. So they're gonna, one in uniform and three in rural. That's where we're at. Yes.
So this number under ten-sixteen should not be one-twenty-six, two-seventy?
That's where we're getting the minus sixty-three thousand.
So you're taking minus sixty-three thousand out of that line?
Yeah, not the one I gave you.
I know what you're saying, Larry.
Out of ten-sixteen.
We're still having one additional person.
We're just moving around, if there's no additional person, it's just moving up to a little bit farther.
Then I can zero that budget out?
No, you still have one in there.
One sergeant there.
Where was he last year?
In that same place.
Not, no, he wasn't.
There was one in this last year and we don't have any in this.
You got a lieutenant in that sergeant's position. We eliminated the lieutenant's position for sergeant's position.
And where was that lieutenant budgeted?
Ten-fourteen. I got it right there, the first move was actually budgeted ten-fourteen this current year. The next year, he can be budgeted out of ten-sixteen and rural basics are reducing to one-twenty-six. They got the exact same numbers of authorized positions and the same number of individuals. And they're full on our uniform patrol. As you'll notice on ten-fourteen, they actually dropped by one deputy from this year to next year.
Okay, so we budgeted last year in the ten-fourteen, six-seventeen?
Yeah.
And they budgeted six-eleven for this coming fiscal year?
Correct.
So that's a drop from first.
Correct.
Okay. We moved to ten-sixteen, there's some budget in there. If you took out ninety-three thousand, sixty-three thousand dollars, and we're at to rural basic, those two positions.
Correct. And see, I still think it's ten-fourteen because that's where the individual we're talking about was paid from this current year, so that's probably where it's budgeted next year. So that's why I said we take out ten-fourteen, not ten-sixteen.
Well, I think if you add all of those numbers.
It all comes together.
It is out of ten-sixteen, because if you take the FY-fourteen and FY-fifteen, there's about that sixty thousand dollar difference.
Out of ten-sixteen.
Yes.
Okay, are we clear? Thank you. We did reduce that by moving two individuals into the rural basic.
One, one. We're moving on. The total ninety thousand two fifty is coming right here. Okay. So.
I see what's happened, yes, now. It's not clear at all in this, what we've got.
Well, it's because people switch around so much, which is their priority, to switch these people from employees, I mean, from uniform to sergeant to lieutenant this year, which one? And that's where we got messed up, is where they transferred one this year to uniform patrol, so when we budgeted, we budgeted seven instead of eight in rural basic. So now we're taking one of these, not the same individual, we're taking one person back to uniform patrol and the person they chose was a sergeant.
Let's move on.
Okay.
Let's move on to ten-nineteen, let's go to about overtime there.
We did cut eight thousand dollars last week.
Right.
You already proved that. Okay, discussion on overtime on the next budget on page fifty.
Wait a minute, can we go back?
Are we done with this budget?
Yes.
No, no, I have one, just one clarification.
Okay.
Last time you talked about you had broken down the overtime and you had added, what numbers, three line items. To further explain, there was standby pay, training pay, field training, instructor pay. I didn't add that up. But that used to be embedded in the overtime.
Into wages.
Oh, that was embedded in wages?
Yeah, standby pay, field training, instructor pay was coded right in with the wages, not overtime. And I, Jean and I talked about this, so that was one question that came up. It did, we're not budgeting overtime.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And we did cut eight thousand there, plus six-twelve in FICA and seven ninety in IFRS for last week. These are in addition.
So what are we talking about first, cuts to?
Okay, per day is ninety thousand two fifty. And the cuts are going from general basic to moving to rural basic. Everybody clear on that?
Yeah, it's not really cut, it's just a move.
No, it's not cut, it's just moving the funding. We don't have the ability.
I understand that.
Okay, now we go to the next item that we discussed last week, was the overtime pay in investigations page fifty.
Well, let's pass on this.
Okay, pass it.
I create motion to discuss it as amended.
That's with the reduction of eight thousand dollars.
No, you did that last week.
Oh, we did that, all right, I, I make the motion, yes, okay.
Second.
Hi.
Now, we move on page fifty.
So this one's done? Uniform patrol is done?
It's done, that's done.
It's received, it may not be done.
Okay, the next one I'm going to, that was discussed last week and Greg and myself and Jean met, and the way this worked out, the federal overtime in line item ten-nineteen is counted at fifty thousand dollars. So we're doing, reducing that line item by fifty thousand. We're taking that fifty thousand and creating three new departments for three different grants. And the name of those grants are HIDTA, federal reimbursement, our grants for reimbursements, HIDTA, US Marshal, and Good Task Force. So we're taking that fifty thousand, taking out overtime here, moving into these three departments so we can track it. There's seventeen thousand five hundred, seventeen thousand five hundred, and fifteen thousand are total fifty. Then we create a line items, revenue line items, that tie back to each one of these departments. So if they have, say, ten thousand overtime in US Marshal, when you get that checked back, we put it in that line item so we know that what they're spending in overtime, those three department divisions, match up with the revenues. So we're adding fifty thousand revenue. So net result is, we've never budgeted federal overtime before, not by our budget of revenue, so that helps us by fifty thousand in our shortfall, it's new revenue. To create, you know, to accomplish our shortfall, we gotta use cuts in expenses or new revenues. In this case, it's a new revenue, fifty thousand federal overtime to split the three departments.
I would just like to add, thank you for doing that, it's a lot more clearer now and we're not actually taxing for money that we're getting as grants.
Right.
So thank you.
That was our concern from last week too.
Yes, Larry, go ahead.
You're not affecting the tax askings.
Not in general basic, because we're capped out. We're, we're letting the maximum cap in general basic, because of three fifty. Where that three fifty plays, well, we generate revenues, we have to come up with one million, I'll tell you the exact number, we have to come up with one million one hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars in cuts or new revenues, because we aren't taxing the other three fifty. So, all that one million one thirty-three, the fifty thousand new revenue, so that reduces that by fifty thousand.
That's not new revenue though, that's revenue that has been used for tax reduction.
No, it's never been budgeted. To have tax reduction, you have to budget, otherwise the fifty thousand's been going into reserves.
Reserves, tax reduction, it's not new money.
Yes, it is, budget wise it is. We've never budgeted revenue for overtime, now we're budgeting fifty thousand.
Right, but you're taking it out of, before it went into reserves, now you're not putting it in reserves, so you've reduced reserves by fifty thousand dollars.
Right, and we don't take account reserves until we're all done with our, exhausted all of our options, then we look at reserves, if we got reserves to use to reduce the deficit.
Right, but we've effectively reduced reserves by fifty thousand with this budget.
No, because this is new money coming in next year, Larry.
This is federal dollars.
This is new money coming in next year.
According to the information that we got last week, you are, this is fifty thousand dollars grant coming in to offset the money that they would pay to these special units.
Right, but they received that last year as well.
Now, this year it did go reserves, but we didn't have to budget it.
Right.
Next year.
So it's not going into reserves, so reserves are.
Right.
Down fifty thousand.
No, because the fifty thousand this year is going to reserves, that we didn't budget it. Next year, it is going to reserves, that we are budgeting it. So that helps us fifty thousand in our million one thirty-three shortfall. So we got fifty thousand new revenue, which is new revenue, I said, cut expenditures or new revenues. This is new revenue, fifty thousand.
I see what you've done and I, I can live with it.
Okay.
So just for clarification, we have nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars left in overtime in that line item?
Yes, and Greg understands that's actually less overtime than they have budgeted this current year. But we're pulling out all the overtime, this for federal reimbursements. So in this case here, you're accruing a fifty thousand dollar cut plus the FICA and IFRS. Now, to reiterate on overtime reimbursement, the reimbursement does not cover the FICA and IFRS. So that's a war, it's gonna remove from here over to the three departments. They don't reimburse with FICA and IFRS, but the wages, they do reimburse us. So, when I say we reduce fifty thousand, move to the departments, we're also reducing FICA and IFRS, FICA by thirty-eight hundred twenty-six dollars, IFRS by forty-nine hundred forty dollars, and we're splitting it up into three appropriate departments, you know, the way is pro rata, seventeen-five, seventy-five, fifteen thousand. But, the FICA and IFRS are wars, because we got a tax fat anyway. Or, we aren't taxing, we're using revenues offset, that we already got in place. So what we've accomplished so far is we reduced our deficit, I don't want to call it, our shortfall, it's either way, ninety thousand two fifty and fifty thousand with new revenue. Now, the ninety thousand's kind of a play on words, because it's just moving from here to help us in general basic and go to rural basic and taxing there. And we have the building, right now we'll be able to tax for that. That's where we're at right now.
What's the final number on this investigation?
Investigation be minus fifty thousand overtime, minus thirty-eight twenty-six in FICA, minus forty-nine forty in IFRS. And then, in our other departments, we're increasing by seven, let me get that here, we're increasing in expenditures the HIDTA by seventeen thousand overtime. We're increasing on expenditures, the HIDTA, by seventeen thousand overtime, thirteen thirty-nine.
Your page is yours.
These are new pages. These are pages you don't have, these are ones I just created yesterday.
Okay.
These are the three new departments that I created.
Okay.
Can we get copies of the new pages, Denny? So it, I mean, it's just hard to understand, not looking at it, being a visual person.
I get copies of that, that's no problem.
Thank you.
So what we're doing is putting seventeen five in each of those three departments.
Fifty thousand dollars.
And putting it in the course on FICA and IFRS. And we're offsetting the actual overtime dollars by revenue.
Right.
Which we hadn't done before.
And we don't have to tax for.
Right.
So two of them are seventeen five, and the other one's fifteen?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand.
HIDTA is seventeen five, US Marshal's fifteen thousand, and the Drug Task Force is seventeen five. Now I'll make up two pages there.
Any other concerns on that, this new page? Hey, you know, I create a motion to receive with the amendments, because it's under investigations.
I'd move it to receive.
If I could ask a quick question, then that leaves, that actual ten nineteen, nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-three.
Correct.
And I just, I mean, it, last year it was thirty thousand, so that's about eleven thousand dollar reduction rate.
Except, aren't you getting to use the fifty thousand dollars, too?
No, because that, what that gives is the detectives not covered by feds.
Okay.
So you're not, they can't use that money.
And when they code it, they'll code this department division, we work out what's in there.
It's eleven thousand cut from invest on our end.
It gives each detective about sixty-six hundred dollars. That's what they average if we don't have a homicide or something like, you know, that we can't plan for.
Right.
Any other discussion? I say this. Those favor, can you say your name?
Hi.
Aye.
I will say, just for Jean and Jennifer, the software that you have in place helps us to project, basically, how those people's, or deputies overtime is going to be used. We can pretty much use that, we can right, go right down the line, and you can see. So that, that software has been helpful for Jean and Jennifer. So when we show you these numbers, they're actual numbers of how we're using throughout the year.
There's, there's been a lot of shifting around, but the total numbers authorized and filled are correct. Even though it doesn't reflect each budget, they're shipped around. Try to give them the right corresponding line item, any part of the new budget.
Hey, let's move on to Correctional Facilities LEC, which is page sixty-five to sixty-seven. Did you do anything there?
Did I do anything there? Yeah, go line by line. Because this work, now you're starting to get into increases that are, what we've done now wasn't really included in this increase. We've been talking eight hundred, seven fifty, eighty, fifty, whatever. Now you go through, you start where the increases are.
So for instance, ten nineteen overtime.
Yes, that's where you start right there.
Yeah, we're looking at an increase from a budgeted forty-two thousand, it's up to one eighty-nine, one hundred eighty-nine thousand five hundred dollars. And I had, my suggested cut was one hundred forty-six thousand dollars.
All right, well, I'd like to weigh in on this one. I think when we met in June, and then we met again in September, Dennis and I and the group, to go over what would be fourteen and fifteen, how we would come about our numbers, we had to come up with a way to make sure that we were staffed adequately. And so we figured out with the wage differences between those that were senior and those that were entry level, this year with a budget amendment, we would probably be covered. But now we have to discuss fourteen, fifteen. So you can cut, cut that, but I just want to share with you that we'll probably be back, I mean, these numbers aren't gonna be off, because we need to have the adequate staffing to cover the jail shifts. As I've said numerous times, six staff, and we're averaging back to two hundred again in the jail. This, this past month, we've been averaging two hundred. One thing you should know is after, you know, it's funny, the courts will try to get people continuances or deal with them after the holidays. So in January, all our minimuses come forward, and now we're averaging about two hundred inmates. So as I said earlier, four people guarding two hundred inmates on the floor, and two people, the correctional officers, in a controlled booth to open the doors, to do all the other administrative ends, and that are not adequately staffed for when it comes to bringing inmates in. We were required to have two in one booking. We still have to feed them, we still have to give meds, so we don't stop our operation. And that's why we've gone to the additional staffing. Quite frankly, I don't know how they managed before, but I think the proof is, it wasn't, it ended up costing us money in the long run. So reducing staff or going backwards is not something that I'm willing to do. I think the, maybe the cheapest way to pay it is that you're gonna have to pay it for overtime versus full-time employees. Because full-time employees require a ton of benefits, this and that. But in the same sense, it does cause other issues. What we have done collectively as a group have gone to twelve-hour shifts. Those twelve-hour shifts will adequately staff, but in turn, we will be paying straight overtime instead of time and a half. And, but we'll have the adequate staffing necessary to make sure we have the people on the floor. So that's, that's where we're at.
Is there anything else you could do? I mean, I'm just throwing this out there for staffing. I mean, when we're looking at having to cut so much out of this budget, there really only are a few places to go, and overtime is one of them. I mean, you can understand it, as you look at the budget.
You know, to me, when you say twelve-hour shifts, I mean, you're adding four more hours onto a eight-hour day.
Right.
For your staff.
Right.
That's gonna cost us one money, that's gonna be another additional, you know, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Right, yes, right.
So that's why, you know, I feel that, you know, we should not be taxing for additional overtime when you are going to, you're going to increase the number of hours that your people's gonna be there, as you know. You know, and you're going to go to four different shifts.
Two shifts.
Two shifts.
Right, six in the morning till six at night.
Twelve hours is crap. Now, I don't know if I would do that or not, but if we're gonna do that, and, and increase this budget by, by hundred and seventy thousand dollars, and then increase it again by reorganizing and going to twelve-hour shifts, we're talking about two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. I mean, that's just my simple.
I'm not sure.
I mean, I may be wrong, am I, am I wrong? Say I'm wrong.
Well, it's triple, I mean, that's, whatever, however you're doing it with your scheduling, the number has really tripled.
So that's why I think, you know, I don't like.
More than that, even.
I don't like to, to tax for overtime at all, basically. I mean, I know there's gonna be some more, based on casual operations, twenty-four seven, transporting people, courtroom responsibilities, judges and all of that, okay, but to tax for this and then do the reorganization that you say you started.
Uh, January twentieth.
Yeah, and, and then, you know, that, that reorganization is gonna cost us, you know, another hundred thousand dollars for that. If the reorganization takes that, then I'm willing to pay for it, or recommend that we do that. But if we have to tax for the overtime, I don't, I don't think that that's a good way for us to go.
That hundred thousand dollar increase doesn't come out of your wages, though.
Where does it come from?
It comes out of the overtime.
Overtime budget.
Overtime budget comes out of taxes.
Yeah, it doesn't come out of wages, but you still have to tax for it.
It's not an additional, we're not asking for an additional hundred thousand.
Well, but, but listen here, you, you got in this land, overtime, you spent twenty-four, twenty-nine thousand, forty thousand, currently ninety-four thousand one seventy-eight, and you're asking for one eighty-nine five hundred.
But that's it. It's not, he's not asking for the one eighty-nine, plus another hundred thousand for the reorganization.
But that's gonna be a cumulative thing, overtime. I mean, if you continue your, your twelve-hour shifts over this fiscal year, and it's consistent, it's gonna cost us additional.
A hundred and four, five thousand for fiscal fourteen, fifteen, and then some, a little bit of overtime on top of that, but I don't think, I'm not sure.
Overtime on top of that, too?
Well.
For holidays, contractual things that we have to pay.
Well, yeah, I can see those things, but I mean, those are own variables, we can't control those separately.
Right.
But I, I still see this figure of one hundred eighty-nine thousand for this year, plus the reorganization.
No, 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 that's where you're missing it.
Well, I missed some.
The four, the four additional hours on each of those shifts comes to straight time overtime, it comes out of your overtime budget, it does not come out of your wages. So there's no increase there. So you can't add a hundred and five and a hundred and eighty-nine, it's just one eighty-nine, which is gonna help me take care of my contractual overtime, any overtime on ten nineteen, my shift.
So the twelve hours, the twelve hours is, is gonna be straight time, there's no overtime built into the time?
Straight time overtime.
Yes, straight time overtime, yes.
There's overtime, just not special overtime.
Well, it, it's still an additional for those people, like, isn't it?
It's an additional, it's, it's already figured into that one eighty-nine thousand.
Okay, I'm gonna look just at that one eighty-nine. And I don't wanna, I don't profess to know nearly what you guys know about that jail, but looking at how much it's costing to have people there, can you look at a different formula with part-time law enforcement? So at a cheaper rate, and so you have the bodies, but then you're not paying all the overtime. I mean, have you, I don't know if that works, but if, believing you that you need more people on the floor, and I'm not there, you are, it's an awfully expensive way, in my opinion, to get your extra bodies by paying that overtime, because those are expensive hours. So I don't know if you've looked at that, I don't know if that's by code, you can even do that, but I don't know how we can support this kind of overtime without raising that three fifty cap, and I'm not going to raise that three fifty cap.
I'm not here to insinuate anybody should or would, I'm.
I know, but you need to know the reality, it's, it's, if you don't, if you need it here, there's, you'll have to cut it somewhere else, either in uniform patrol, I mean, or come up with a different scenario. That's just, that's the facts, in my opinion.
Kind of, I'm yeah.
Sure.
So what your suggestion is, if they go to eight-hour shifts, they could maybe possibly hire two new staffers, maybe they'll have to spend the overtime.
Or part-time, I'm not, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, um, yeah. And it could be someone with training, there's a, you know, maybe a fair amount of retired folks that want a few hours every day, I don't know. I mean, I don't know, I'm just throwing it out, trying to hear what you're saying, that you need help, and, and knowing on this, on this end, that that is not a reasonable thing we can fund. That's all. I, I don't know.
Right.
I would agree, I mean, I, I think there's gotta be some different options.
I, I just, you know, I don't know, I just thought of it about a minute ago.
No, and that's fine, part-time does not seem to work, we have jail standards, and they have to be certified.
You could make it, I, I don't know, maybe it can't make it work, but I don't, you might have to try to figure out something or not have as much on the floor.
It works in the field, as far as reorganization. But when you present a plan and says you're gonna work twelve-hour shifts with your folks, then to me, it should not be fit into overtime pay. It probably should be under, you know, organized employees, where those dollars are into that area for that additional time that, that those four hours are gonna be applied to for, for that time. If you're saying we're not gonna pay these people overtime, it's gonna be straight time, then it should be in another line item. I mean, that, to me, seems to be the simple way to do it.
But it's still not a, I mean, it's still an increase, so.
I think via the contract, they can't do it that way. There's a contract signed by the.
Okay, that's probably true.
There's a contract that's signed by the board, that we're working eight hours. Now that we're gonna go to twelve hours.
I don't want certain bit, I mean, because it's a negotiating thing, we have people that we send out at the table. But if you, if you can go to a twelve-hour shift, still strays, pay straight time, then that place should be in organized employees or some, rather than overtime.
What they're saying, though, is with the seven K in place, and let's just take court security as an example, which is separate from this budget, but this is really what you're looking at. You've got court security folks that work eight and a half hour shift. Every two weeks, they have five hours of straight time overtime is called, every pay period. Because the contract says that they have to give pay for eight and a half hours a day. So when you go back and look at that budget, their overtime is gonna be increased, but it is overtime straight time, not time and a half. Department of Labor still looks at that as overtime straight in their description. So you've got your overtime straight, which is a hundred percent, then you've got your overtime at a hundred and fifty percent. Department of Labor looks at those two as the same, but they are a percentage-based calculation difference. So I think when you, when you get to the court security, you're gonna see the same thing as what they're trying to explain now. That ten hours every cycle actually goes into the overtime line item, because that's how Department of Labor looks at it. So if Denny were to put that in another line item, that was overtime straight, or over, and one, the ten nineteen was overtime at time and a half, you're still gonna have some of those issues, you're gonna wind up with the same amount of funding, it's just gonna be calculated at a different percent.
Why hasn't that been identified like that, I guess? I mean, I haven't seen it in the budget.
It is, it's just being proposed, or just thought.
This is a proposed, however, on court security, if you go back and look at that one, you're gonna see the same context of what they're trying to do here. And so that overtime straight per se, because for the four hours, is for that hundred thousand dollars, is inclusive in that ten nineteen, but it's overtime straight at a hundred percent, which is straight time, and overtime at a hundred and fifty percent, which is your time and a half. Those have always been kind of intermingled because of Department of Labor. In this instance, it's because of the twelve-hour shifts, but the same thing happens every single pay period, according to the contract for court security, every pay period. Five hours of overtime straight.
And I. If I may, George, remember this, they are working additional four hours, and that's what helps on the staffing. So if we look at the big picture and say, we're, we're getting four more hours out of them without adding extra staff. And so to be a good steward of everybody's money, like we all wanna be, this is the, our best answer. Otherwise, we pay time and a half like we are, and I think that's not the right way to go.
And that's why I see.
And that's why.
That account is being conflicted with that. And if, if you're, if you're doing that based on reorganization, then it should be identified in a much different manner.
How you guys identify and work it, that's, I'm, I'm with you, straight.
But we're still paying for more hours, that's why it's gone up, gone up significantly. So it's either the same person working more hours, it'd be like hiring another person. Basically, we've embedded another position into everybody's.
In everybody's.
But you're not paying FICA and all those other things, let's recognize that. We are, we are getting more hours out of people, but we're not paying all those other benefits. It's not, it's not, we're not bringing on eight or nine.
You're still paying more, I, I mean.
You're still being paid FICA, I don't think anyone would be paying his health insurance, that's why.
Benefits, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so you're still, right, I, that's right.
And I, I think.
The point is, we're eight hundred, we're a long ways out killer in our general basic. They have eight hundred thousand dollars increase. If you don't decrease this one, we're gonna make up, if you don't increase, just hypothetically, if you don't decrease this a hundred, we're gonna cut the other one to get to where we got it.
Well, you can cut cars, I, I think when we get to that, that explanation.
I think there's gonna be more than even cars, though, that are needed.
Well, we can work, here's, here.
Unless you have, have identified eight hundred thousand dollars worth of cuts somewhere else that we don't know about.
What I'm trying to say is, these, when we identified an area that really had great concern, and I think we all would recognize, our jail has been.
Understaffed.
Understaffed, and we've had issues. How do we rectify that problem? I think we would all be wrong if we just said, well, we're gonna go back and continue as we did. That's what got us where we're at. And when we talk about dollars and cents, we might be better off paying a little here than for a number of different attorneys.
Well, it's not, it's, it's a lot, and it needs, it needs passing through state. And I, you know, I don't know if I agree with you as far as you being understaffed in the past. I really don't.
George, in all seriousness, and I, I respect you.
I'm serious, too, and I don't think so.
I don't think you could work up there in that environment with four people on the floor. Exactly, so why should our guys, but why should our guys have to suffer under that?
But I, I just think that we've gotta do something about this, because down later on here, you're still asking for another one hundred and sixteen thousand for new correctional officers' ways of benefits.
That's in line item.
That's in line item, yeah.
And if we, those, when we talked, I don't.
Those are huge items that we have to, you know, take into consideration. So I'm still.
Well, I would move to remove all of that. I'm sorry. I mean, if I would, I, it's, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, that's fine. Here's, here's the point. What I'm bringing to your attention is nothing more than, let's look at this. We put it on the table. We needed three nurses. When you quoted all these other counties, let's not forget, all these other counties of our size have twenty-four-seven nursing. So if we're gonna use those, Dennis, allow me to finish. If we're gonna use those, then we must comply along the same line. I can't have you.
Let's use across the board.
Yeah, we can't use a few figures and take some, you know, that's.
We aren't picking across the board. They have more tax base to generate more money to do those three nurses. We don't have the ability. Simple. Black Hawk can generate five-and-a-half million dollars more. That'd do more than anything you'd ever want. And we wouldn't have to add the general sub-leveling in certain cases. But when you have the tax base different, we're comparing apples to apples, total budget by department management. So if they have twenty-four nurses, we're still comparing total budget. What could be done? The board gave you nine point two million. You disperse it out and figure out how you're gonna live with it in that. If you need five nurses, you're gonna have to cut five something else. Maybe that's the way to go. To line by line, just give you a block number and let them do the budgeting. Come back and tell us how you are spending.
I'm not gonna line by line, because I need some explanation as far as I'm concerned.
I agree.
I really do, you know, with overtime. And, and we talked about reorganization. That's gonna cost us additional money. If that reorganization is embedded in this one eighty-nine, five hundred, then it should be full house. I, you know, I understand the support of the Department of Labor and all that, and we have to do abide by that by the law. I know what you're doing, but if this reorganization is gonna cost us that amount of money, then we should know exactly why that is and how that, how that's accounted for. It should not be, it does give the public a good explanation when they look at overtime. Overtime to me means that I work my eight hours, and then I come in and work an additional two to three hours, and I get paid off that. That's how I did it in the old days at the packing house.
Right.
But we've got a different definition of that now.
We got all kinds of overtime.
Yeah.
So overtime, all that overtime.
It's hard to get a handle on.
Those rules.
Well, I know you didn't mind, but I, but I think that we need a better definition and clarification on what overtime means. Because to me, I guess I'm also, that's how I see overtime.
Sir, I can't answer anything other than four, four additional hours they work, they're gonna be paid, and it's paid at straight time instead of time and a half.
Well, I still, I, I will still get my forty-six thousand out of this overtime budget.
Well, I'd like to remove the new employees, I guess.
We're all, we're all part of county government. We've got X numbers of dollars to spend. There are no more. Your department, and when I hear from you that the jail's been understaffed, I told you the first time you said it. That's news to the board. You know, we're not over there in that jail. How do we know it's staffed right or not? It's been staffed that way for last twenty years that it's been there that I know of. But getting back to my point, we've only got a finite amount of dollars. And you only get a certain amount of that. So when Denny talks about nine point two million, is that, what, is that what the budget was last year?
That's the current budget. With the new budget, you have to add pay increases by the contract, those things. And these increases are additional.
Nine point two was what you had to spend this year. Can't go to ten. The money's not there. So I hate to sit here and cut each line item one at a time, but I don't know what other choice I have, because the money's not there.
Well, in nineteen, I've, I've told you this. In nineteen eighty-seven, when we moved from the Sioux City Police Department Municipal Building over there, you guys were all around. We left there to this brand-new facility. We housed roughly sixty-eight inmates. We had six people that worked on the floor and in the, on a shift. That's two as they are now and four on the floor. We're sixty-eight inmates. When we have two hundred inmates, something happened. Why other sheriffs didn't come here and plead with you, I don't know.
Well, they did, and we gave them, we gave them additional help. In fact, what we did with the state, we had them come in and look at our situation, because as you remember, you were on, all three of you guys were on the court. We had two hundred-some-odd people in, in, on the way that stopped there that needed to go to jail. And we didn't have them for them.
Right.
And as a result of that, we whipped them off the state, gave us approval to open up very, very different sites. We went from every community in the county and had open meetings to tell them that we were gonna, gonna do this, because we didn't have a room.
Right. I agree.
And as a result of that, then we went into your facility over there, and we remodeled it so that we would have additional cells from that sixty-eight up to two hundred and thirty-four, I believe you're right.
Right.
So.
But still the same staffing, George, same staff.
It is not the same staff. We, we added staff to, to compensate for that.
When the jail inspector was here, there were back then, we did add nineteen, I believe it was nineteen jammers. So then we added good staff, according to them, to house two hundred and thirty-four people. Over the years, I think five jammers may have been eliminated since then.
Right.
And they were all under the sheriff, giving them up, for whatever reason. All five people.
But they were recommendations. We didn't kinda go to those sheriffs and say, let's, why don't you reduce your staff by three or four or five, reduce fiscal year. They came to us and said, we can reduce our staff.
I was, I was the chief, I was the chief deputy, and I got a letter from Maury Welty saying that we were gonna decrease our staff. I've showed that letter before. I asked, instead of reducing four.
Huh? I wish you would've cared with us.
Right. Yeah, I, I still have the letter, and I asked if we could not reduce it to four, but at least have one additional. So I know under Sheriff Amyk, he was never giving back personnel.
Well, anyway, I think it was kinda George said.
George, previously this fall and last summer, when we started doing this, I sent you all information showing, and it came from each jar, but not from our office. We had more staff at nineteen ninety-nine in that jail than you now.
Yeah, and you don't mind? Because we, we added that staff, but then the sheriffs in the past came back to us during budget time and asked for, for reorganization's changes and nothing else. We did not ever, from my perspective, go to it.
And I, and I think the reason.
Ask them to reduce your staff by X amount of people.
We're not saying it. We're not, we're not, we're not.
We don't have that.
George, we're not arguing that.
I know, what we're trying to explain.
I just don't wanna take the blame for us telling the sheriff that they have to reduce their staff by X amount of people.
I don't think the sheriff said that you reduced the staff, but you did.
No, I didn't.
We're just pointing out that this is what we need in order to keep it safe and secure up there, and we're laying it out in front of you here, and we're explaining how we're gonna do it. And we do need an increase in the budget to do it.
Well, I think you need an increase in the budget, but not by this amount of money that we're talking about here, two and a half. We can't afford it.
Well, and I think the reason a lot of this is coming bold now is, you know, they probably have lost staff over there over the years because the sheriffs before got a certain budget and they had to make it work. Well, what's the best way to do it? Cut staff, make them work.
Right now.
Well, it's happening right now. They also came in and said, this is how we can, how we can do with our budget and work in the system, and they did that. We didn't, we didn't force anything down there for.
Well, I don't, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying they, they only had a certain amount of money and they had to work with it.
When I see, we see an increase in these line items, particularly overtime, of double the amount, fifty-six percent more than it was, then to me, it's gotta be justified.
It is, George, it is.
Because certification is acceptable by me. I mean, I, I think it isn't by the rest of the board either.
Look at where you're at right now in this fiscal year.
I know.
I know. That's alarming, too.
That's, that's controlled by you folks over there. I can't go over there, or we can't go over there and tell you how to spend the money that you have within your budget.
I know, but it's.
But I think that you have to be prudent in the way that you do it. You have to, you know, look at these line items as it's gone on, kind of conservative, and say, listen, where can we change this somehow? Overtime is not the place to do it. I, I don't.
Then give me the bodies. That's, I mean, there is.
Then we're increasing our budget again.
Exactly.
You know, and we're increasing it on a permanent basis, Dave. I mean, these, these bodies don't normally go away.
Right. We're, we still have those numbers in the jail, and we can sit and, there's no reason to sit and argue this, because it's.
I'm not arguing. I'm just, we're discussing.
But that's fine. But we're trying to share each other's points, and we're not getting anywhere, because I get it. But on the other hand, I would be negligent on my behalf, on the county's behalf, if we went backwards and said, we're gonna go back with all the things that are required by the state for housing inmates. We're gonna go back to having four people on the floor and two in controlled environments. We think that is.
Go backwards.
Right. So the only other choice is that you have to get, we'll have to have the overtime to do the function or the personnel. And I'm, what I'm sharing with you is, I recognize that hiring additional staff would become a burden. And over time, I said, maybe we could have two correctional officers a year and, and one nurse added. I recognize that that's not where you guys wanna go, 'cause you don't have the dollars. But where we have, we have to pay.
Well, I, I know.
Because we have to cover.
We do have to pay, and, you know, the problem I have here is that, one of the other part wasn't the problem. You know, we have an overtime budget that we budgeted forty-two thousand dollars for this year, and we're up to ninety-four thousand dollars.
Right.
Since you're out of line on that particular budget, completely out of line. And once you, there's just too much flexibility there to, to let go. I mean, that's why I wanna cut some. I don't get a second for my motion.
You know, well, it's hard to.
Out of that particular area.
It, it's hard to cut it, because I really, honestly, I believe that you believe you need it. That's as far as I, you know, I have no reason not to believe that you're sincere in coming over and that that's what you believe. The other side, the reason I didn't do it is I just think, maybe you go back to what Larry says, you figure out what the budget is and the dollars. You know, I worked a lot of years in education, and we had the same kind of budget talks, and they said, well, you can have it here, but you're gonna cut it somewhere else, 'cause there's no new money. So it just is, it's going around in my mind. It's like, okay, if you need it there, you need it there. But then you're going to have to give it up somewhere else. And I don't know, I don't know enough about your department, really, Dave, to tell you where to give it up, other than.
Well, I appreciate.
It's here, and it goes away somewhere else.
And I appreciate you at least listening.
I do listen, and, but.
I think y'all are, but I think in the sense, I don't know if you recognize the issues that have gone on over there and what happens when you have shortage of staff, when you have.
David, we recognize that. I mean.
We do.
You know, we were going yesterday. We, we know a lot of the things that go on over there. We're just not in the mix like you are twenty-four-seven. But I understand, and we understand what goes on in that jail over there. And we don't wanna let you folks in a dangerous situation, and, but we also have to keep people confined that need to be confined in a, in a safe manner. That's why we borrowed one point two million dollars to help that get done. You know, that's another amount of money that we put in over there. But I think we should move on and stop editorializing here. And I'll move on from, from this line item, and, and we'll go on down the list.
But isn't Dave prioritizing the jail as the most important part of the sheriff's department?
I don't know if you are, if that's all the farther we've gotten in your budget. So I don't know what's gonna come next, quite honestly.
I believe it's, I believe it has the highest priority. We'd be negligent in not looking.
All right.
Well, I think, you know, all of the force, all the bonus are important and highest priority, but we have to be prudent in the way that we do this. I, I think we should move on down to this budget.
Okay.
You said, on line item, ten ninety-nine, that you wanted to do something with that.
I just, I did.
And I'll move that with one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars out of there, because I'm not gonna vote for this budget and, and have that amount of overtime. And then add another one hundred and sixteen thousand dollars that's never been budgeted before to the budget. It's just that.
And, and I'm not arguing that. But I think what I, you know, you, you can have these meetings ahead of time as a group here, and we could've went over some of these things, to say what we've talked about before. Two additional correctional officers and one nurse a year and such. We could've had work sessions and gone through some of this, but I feel that it's important that you knew.
We've been pretty sessioned during that.
Having open meetings?
No, not open meetings.
That's what I'd want, right? We go over to work sessions.
Open meeting right here. That's what we're discussing.
Right. But that's what I mean. We could've did this in another open meeting and, and shared it, but that's fine. Yeah, you, you can cut that. I, what I'm saying is, you cut that, that's fine, but I'm still gonna need those, the staff that I have, and that's why we're going to the twelve-hour shifts. So I have the bodies.
You know, vote for that, and also vote for one hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars.
Right. And so you're cutting, you're cutting the, the staff, or, or not cutting it, just not allowing for the proposed new employees, huh?
Hasn't been cut, but.
Not yet. I can live with that.
So to be clear, you're not cutting the overtime budget, but you're gonna cut.
Well, I can get a second for it.
Okay. I'm just trying to.
Well, for right now, alls we're doing is receiving the budget. I think we're still gonna go back and probably have to look at this.
Yeah, I, I do.
Not second it right now, but.
I just wanted to know if there was a little problem in there, so. You're going around and mentioning first round of cuts.
Yeah.
You're reviewing the cuts for telling, please tell them this is what you're cutting, but it's subject for you. We'll get the in-line, where are we at on general basis, Ron?
I just made a motion to cut one hundred and sixteen thousand.
Well, I second it, yeah. On that. All right, I agree, I guess.
Any further discussion? Those in the paper indicating you're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Same.
Anything on this budget on page sixty-five? We have, go on to, on the next page, we have. General service assistance, that's gone up to twenty-nine fifteen.
Hey, there's three new nurses.
There's two new nurses there. You have one nurse now? You have a nurse, you have one nurse now?
No, we have three.
You have three already over there? You got three more?
Yes.
You're trying to man twenty-four hours.
I know, but you were, but you were manning that twenty-four hours with the three nurses. How long?
No, no, we don't now.
Two and a half, yeah. One's a thirty hour.
And then you gotta remember, they don't work twenty-four-seven.
I know.
They got days off and.
I know, they're getting off.
Have to factor all that in.
There's, there's, in order to get us close to twenty-four-seven nursing care in that jail, we need additional three-four hours. That's what we're asking for.
Will that be removed?
Is it the cost for three nurses, that two hundred and ten?
Yeah, two hundred and ten, yeah.
There's a motion to remove the, that amount from the budget. And there was a second, I said I did. Any further discussion? Those in the paper indicating you're saying aye?
Aye.
Uh.
Taser.
The wearing safety apparel.
Our problem here that I'd like to point out to everyone is our actuals for FY thirteen, and I think Mr. Butler may have told you that. We didn't have, we don't have those numbers. Period thirteen wasn't put in, into our figures.
Hey, I can give you those. I got it.
We have, we got them now.
But we need to make some changes in some of these line items, because we don't have the money for food. By use of, for fiscal year thirteen, with two hundred and seventy-four thousand for food, we've only budgeted two forty-five, because we didn't get period thirteen. For the part of the paperwork.
Larry, you had a concern on twenty-nine and forty, was it? Safety apparel?
Yes. That's twenty-some new tasers.
We'll go back to that. We'll go back to that.
Does everyone carry a taser?
No, this is allowing, um, the staff.
We have, we have nine people that are carrying full time. And then we are gonna go with eleven in the jail facility. We'll rotate between the two shifts when we've got people working.
So nine plus eleven?
We're the same boat with our tasers in the jails, we are with our patrol tasers are out of warranty.
And what's happened now is the, just so you understand, I think this will help you, is that, uh, the state jail inspector has allowed tasers now to be worn in the jail, which I think is gonna be beneficial.
Are you taser?
Yes, because now they won't have to go hands-on. We won't have to worry about maybe all the other issues that come into play. Because a taser in itself will, uh, scare most people and stop any incidents. So, uh, the other taser we have is locked up. So it'd be like a fireman going to a fire, grab a hose and say, oh, I gotta go back to station and get the other hose. We want to make sure that we have.
Do you want to buy each individual?
No, not every, no. Everybody on that, each, the shift, one shift. So when they're done, they'll hand it off to the next.
How many are on his shift?
There's nine people on a shift?
No. Out of these twenty tasers.
Right.
Nine of my people carried them full time in transport, court security, electronic monitoring. They have to have them in the jail. The other eleven would be used, would be rotated between the two shifts. So the correctional officers that are on the floor have a taser on them so that they can, they have it with them immediately.
You said, I just heard you say you have so many for your court transport people?
Yes.
That might should be budgeted in general sup under court transport. The reason I'm saying that, I'm not saying it's just nine tasers in general basic, or we're short, we're in general sup. I hate to say this, but we got unlimited levels. So it'd be good to take those tasers out and put them over.
How much security is that?
Nine.
Nine.
Nine tasers? I would discuss it. How much a taser?
About nine thousand for nine thousand each.
About a thousand in your court.
So that's, that's nine thousand dollars up, you've cut out this.
And we'll put it over in court security.
Right.
Because you have two different units, you got jail and you got court transport.
Right, yeah, it should probably get in there.
Okay, I don't want to go back and belabor this, but if you said that the tasers make it safer.
Right.
For the jailers.
Right.
So can you have less jailers because now you have tasers?
No, still gonna have the.
That doesn't free the guy up to go do the check in the holding cell when he's passing max. All that does is keep him, the ability to react to something that happens in front of him.
Just that, just trying to.
Hey, I get where you're coming from, I'm, all right.
Do your people in their control room where you hold them closed, do they carry a taser?
Well, they wouldn't do them any good, they're inside.
Everybody in that shift, we're in taser, those, what's our toll if you say yes?
So there's three tasers per shift then?
No, we're gonna.
Eleven.
We're gonna have two, two shifts, two twelve hour shifts.
Okay, then you've got four and a half.
They're gonna hand their taser over to, taser over to the next shift coming on. That's where the eleven tasers are gonna.
Eleven people?
There are times where we may have eleven on the floor, there are times where we may have eight on the floor. So we need enough tasers.
But you're saying these, these tasers you have now are outdated and you want to replace?
Right.
They're out of warranty.
They're out of warranty.
Was gonna have to go.
Can you phase them in over two years? I mean, are they good enough to buy half this year and half next year or not? You know, I don't know.
For five years. They used to have a program where you could get two hundred fifty dollars on freight in on the taser. But because ours are sold out of warranty, they won't even purchase them back from us. There's nothing you can do with these things.
So what are you gonna do?
No, I mean.
I just have a taser on right now because I ate one.
Yeah, we all, we had to get ours up.
Oh, you'd be using it?
We left it out.
I'm really bad, I'm a.
You're wrong ants.
You're, you're gonna, you're gonna replace, you want to replace the ones that trip.
And I would say to you, with taser now, we'll do it right a little smarter in the past. When we purchase the tasers, we will make sure we're on the replacement program. So in five years, it doesn't cost us a thousand dollars a taser, it only costs us like five hundred dollars a week.
So how much is left here for tasers?
A thousand, I believe they're a thousand dollars.
Yeah, you deleted nine of them.
I know it's not a lot, but can you do half this year and half next? You know the condition, you know the longevity.
I, that, that's a possibility, I just, you know, I, ideally, yeah, it'd be nice that they all had them, uh, eight.
But then they don't all come do it once.
You know, instead of eight or, or instead of eleven, could you look at eight? I mean, that's, that would at least cover the minimum staffing.
Nine of them, we want to record security.
But I'm still talking about.
We're still doing eleven here.
Yeah, well, maybe replace five and a half of them.
Security in the.
Yeah, we're gonna do that for.
That's going to a different area, but for the jail, if I, if I went to eleven from, uh, from eleven to eight.
Yeah, fund five of them or something. Five new ones and next year come back and get.
A little more than half. Well, that's, uh.
How many do you need?
Six, I'd like eleven.
Eleven, oh.
But six is a better number.
Sure would be nice if they're staggered.
But which, which, so many every year.
My motion is, uh, to buy, uh, five. Maybe we'll have more money next year.
So we have five.
It's not biggie, but it's.
Fifteen thousand.
You leave five thousand for tasers, yeah. It's not a ten thousand bucks a piece.
That's still, they're only gonna cut our budget by.
No, that isn't.
Because it's gonna go into general sup.
Yeah, we're a tax there.
I cut it by five, six thousand though, Larry, if he's gonna buy six next year.
That's true.
I want it to be recognized.
Knowing your mind, five next year, you still have four.
Right, whatever, the numbers are right.
Let's go on to item, uh, forty-four seventy-five, what, what is?
So we cut fifteen thousand?
Fifteen thousand.
But, but man, you're, um, with the numbers that we have here in front of us, if we went to wearing and safety apparel in, uh, actials in twenty thirteen, we're showing fifteen eight fifty, is that the numbers you people have?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's, that's actual.
Well, here it is, period thirteen thrown in there, it's thirty-three two thirty-one. So that's why that's hard to budget for.
That's.
You spent actual, uh, thirty-three what?
Two thirty-one.
Two thirty-one. Thirty-three thousand. Thirteen, that's what thirty, period thirteen had. What's I got?
You buy them all at the end?
Or did we have a big journal where we bought a lot of uniforms, equipment and stuff? Because why did you have so much there?
Well, we did have six new jailers.
But that being this for your budget, wasn't it?
No, I was last year, when the deputies were hired to become.
So that right blew them to thirty-three thousand.
Jail was when he became deputies. So that is not one time.
Yeah, we lost four.
The, the other one I'm more concerned with is what I mentioned, two, twenty-three oh one. Who?
I think we really should look at that.
Because we really don't have control over that, especially with our numbers.
We show two sixty-three thirty-one.
Actually, two seventy-four.
It's two seventy-four, two eleven.
We didn't have those numbers when we were.
So in other.
We were only budgeted two forty-five, we were, we, our budget, wasn't our budget last year, it was over by fifteen thousand.
You've spent to date how much?
One fifty-nine three oh five.
What was that, two seventy-four for your year?
That was the fiscal year thirteen, remember? We didn't have period thirteen in there, I told you, mentioned that this morning.
So for us to.
We got the numbers here and they got them too.
For us, well, we got them now, but for us to budget that, when we went to budget it, we didn't have those.
We didn't increase our budget in that line item and we need to.
The board asked everybody to come in zero. Well, it didn't work out that way. Because, you know, you're, what you feel is comfortable to work with.
But.
What do you feel you need, two seventy-four?
Period thirteen was.
Do you feel you need two seventy-four?
Well, we just, our, our contract with CVM just went up three cents a, a meal.
That'd be able to go up to like two fifty-five.
But we'll still be short, George.
Yeah, I don't know if they can, can you, can you hold them?
Well, two sixty, because that's what we scheduled, I mean, uh, actual spent in, uh, twenty thirteen.
No, we actually spent two seventy-four, two eleven.
We don't have the numbers, George. We don't have them.
I knew the old numbers and they got them too.
We needed those numbers.
Right, we actually spent two seventy-four.
That's contract.
Yeah, and they went up, remember, three cents a meal.
Yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna go on July first.
And we're probably averaging.
I do believe that we stat, uh.
To two seventy-four.
Two seventy-four.
Or whatever it was.
Based on, that's relative to spending, so, to, to date, so.
And you do what you gotta do, I guess.
Right.
When did they bid that out? So they bid that out?
I mean, we, you can bid, that's up to you guys to bid that out. We, um, the whole thing behind that is I think they're cheaper by far, but.
We're being.
Well, wouldn't it be a lot cheaper?
Beginning, beginning July first, we will be, we will start paying a dollar fifty-one a meal. I, Dakota County is an example, is paying over three dollars a meal.
Pretty cheap.
Let's go on here.
So your name is?
Yeah.
Thirty thousand?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty or thirty-two?
Thirty. Thirty.
To make it two seventy-five.
Let's, uh, go on to item, I had a question on forty-four seventy-five maintenance contracts, that's, that's gone up substantially.
I mean, this is figured on that one too. Forty-four seventy-five, the maintenance contracts.
Yeah.
Yeah, something's not right with that line.
We've, we've never budgeted for them, we've always been over, way over in that line. Because they've never been budgeted for.
Maintenance contracts?
Yes.
Right.
What figures do you have?
What do you mean over rent?
They're, they're in the tax, the tax too, he's got a reason he wants that much.
It went up twenty-two thousand five hundred. Pretty sure, but you've added something, you've added life, life scan?
No, that's not added, that's just ever been.
Okay, how about taser contract, that's twenty fifteen thousand, that's what it's adding.
Right.
So that's what caused that prevention piece there?
No, not all of it.
Where have these things been paid for before?
Grants.
Grants.
All those grants, shelf life ended.
All that Jennifer's.
Sunsetted.
Jennifer's, the one, canceled that all that for the years.
You know the way I am with grants, if grants disappear, so does whatever it funded disappear.
Right, but some of it shouldn't, it'd be a bad practice. And I'll tell you why. Um, taser cameras that we purchased with the last of the grant money. The guys up in the jail will wear it here, uh, it'll be a body camera.
Yeah.
They'll go everywhere, that'll go with them.
How long do they last?
Here's the good news. Part of that contract fee is we're gonna have a two-year storage of the evidence. Because we all know a two-year retention is what needed, is what is needed in lawsuits. So we'll be able to retain that information with whatever happens on a two-year basis. We bought these with the fact that when they go bad after so many years, I believe it's five or, they handle five or six, anything electronics that has a warranty, the, the trade-in value will, uh, offset because we, we entered into a warranty agreement. So that when the next time comes around, instead of, because that grant isn't gonna be there, that SCAP money's gone. SCAP was for immigration. And that money's all gone. And so we use the last of that for, uh, like I said, identifying that area of concern was in the jail with the cameras. So we'll, we'll have a little video for you in the coming weeks to show you what they go through up there. And you'll be able to see how important these little cameras are. But Jennifer, go ahead with the information on those things that were never budgeted.
But we used to pay for them through the J grants, um, our two thousand nine J grant, we had a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars for our half. This year's J grant, we get twenty-one thousand. That's how much the J grants have decreased over the last few years. And that's where we used to pay for our maintenance contracts, our tasers, all that kind of stuff from. And our, um, input computers were paid for through the J grants, which we won't have enough to pay for that stuff anymore.
You know, that's one of the disentanglements, the type of programs they never are sustainable. They go away and the local communities are always left a fool in the bag with the, with the funding.
Well, yeah, they have a sunset, it's a horrible way to budget.
Yeah.
And that's, I think, in the past, that's how the, how it has been budgeted. Whereas now it's come to roost and here we are. And, and once again, we, we can't regress, but we need to continue to go forward.
Is that fifteen thousand, that per year or is that fifteen come with two years? Is that a fifteen thousand dollar two-year contract?
Well, it'd be fifteen on the.
Jail side.
Jail side and fifteen.
Seven.
Seven.
So.
Up for the patrol side, it's twenty-two thousand for evidence storage. Right, we have it over there.
They maintain all of the evidence, this company, we just.
They need to.
Right.
Okay, let's go on to the next item, what about, do you like, uh, high scanner interface questions? I was just mentioning that.
That's part of twenty-five.
That's part of what we just talked about.
Plus the next page, fifteen for the taser, so you're just talking about cameras, stored for two years.
So you left that. Yes, we did. Uh, the contractual services on page sixty-seven, is that still the same deal as forty, uh, four seventy-eight? And, uh, the contractual three-six thousand dollars, is that?
Contractual services is like Sue Laundry, Sue Laundry is three thousand a month alone. So for twelve months.
Went up so much for three years' year.
Right.
Last two years were like twenty-one, I gotta look over.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-one, twenty-three.
Yeah, we budgeted twenty-six.
Twenty-five thousand last year with period thirteen, now we're jumping to thirty-six. Are we doing a lot more laundry or did they?
We have a lot more inmates. It's one of the things you have to think about.
If you look at, if you look at where we're at right now, year to date.
We're running right.
We're running right ahead.
Right there. But they didn't raise their rates, they pretty much kept.
It's per pound, it goes by per pound.
Okay, but do they raise their per pound rate?
No.
Okay, okay.
Can you look at bringing that up before, Greg?
I think it's been a while, but I think it is something that.
Probably about, um, four years ago, I think, or five years ago.
But.
End of, um, sheriff's term, we did try to get that out and Sue Laundry was still way below.
Okay, is there anything else on this budget? Anything else?
What's the numbers, Dave?
What are, what are the, what are the numbers that we got? Are we gonna do anything right now?
They're, they can't.
Right now, they're left alone.
I don't have most, I don't have.
I'll see what Norrie's coming in with there.
Three hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred eleven dollars were cut. We added thirty, okay, here we go. We took the hundred sixteen thousand out the two proposed chairs. We took, added thirty thousand on the food. We took out the three nurses of two hundred ten thousand. Then we took fifteen thousand on a wearing apparel, which we're gonna move over to court security, it's just a move. So we can basically cover taxes, basically. So that's our net, is three hundred eleven thousand, seven hundred eleven minus. So that's our net, is three hundred eleven thousand, seven eleven minus.
You took three hundred and ten thousand from nurses?
Two hundred ten. Two hundred ten, sorry, two ten. We took hundred sixteen, seven eleven, gave thirty, took two ten, took fifteen, and that's it. Or that's what it totaled, right now.
Totaled what?
Three hundred eleven thousand, seven eleven minus.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
If a prisoner needs a nurse and there is no nurse in the jail, what happens? Then we call them. That's.
We call them or we take them up to hospital?
And that would cost overtime or consterating?
There's always.
Plus, it's more expensive than hospital.
How often does that happen?
Probably at least four, five times a week.
And what part of the line item does it come up?
Hospital, it's hospital.
The same for track line. So you could, if you hired a nurse, you would expect that line item to go down and help pass that some of that.
You know, the situation is though, guys, correct me if I'm wrong, a nurse cannot administer medical care except for taking vitamins and then, you know, might be doing some analysis. What do they do? Because you're suggesting that we are gonna provide medical care in the jail and then take liability for that, the person overdoses and do whatever and go pass out, then it comes back, best of pursuit?
But.
I'd rather have that person, if necessary, analyzed by the nurse to say that this person needs to be out of here and go to a hospital where they receive the care.
And that's what we're talking about, George, is that we need, we need more nursing staff so that they can be assessing these inmates and making determination if they don't, first off, or they're faking it. Some of the things that we couldn't save money is on ID medication. Sometimes an inmate needs to have some kind of ID medication. If there's a nurse on staff, we could do it right at the jail instead of having to take them to the hospital. We have no nursing staff on the weekend and you know, that's when so many of our inmates come in and we truly need that medical staff to be there because it's putting our personal officers out there to have to make some of those determination. And we can call the nurse, but the nurse can't do an assessment over the call.
No.
Oh, yes.
So to address your point, your concern about the nurses doing things, you don't have to do it on the hard side, you know, you have a period level.
Right. They, they do the assessments, instead of correctional officer trying to do the assessment, calling the nurse, who then has to call the doctor. We're proposing to eliminate that by having a nurse there because she can do all those things and then communicate with the doctor, hey, this is where this should go, and that, that would help.
What do you?
We also have another area where, where it's going to impact our hundred sixteen period.
Not only, yeah, period, and also our mental health. Our nurses help set up our mental health and, and make that determination for, we have, you know, mental health situations where we need to do emergency code.
Can you cut those other line items and find enough money to get even a half-time nurse then, if you're gonna save this money with a, a nurse, to justify hiring one?
Well, I'm thinking too, what can we, why can't we cross train, you know, our correctional officers over there to do some of that?
Oh, here.
To be able to identify or to look at a person.
Those, those correctional officers are doing something else because we only got four on the floor.
And on top of that, what a nurse may say, correctional officer, you, you'd have, why would a correctional officer once you cross, Dr. Mike, be a nurse?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I mean, that's just like firing my dad, you know, coming to my house, taking care of me when I have a problem, but they also, when they call, they come out and put a fire in the house.
Right.
So I don't, I don't see much difference there.
So if you have three nurses more full-time, what I'm hearing now is that four hundred thousand dollars to cost, you're delivering, rotating them here, there, whatever, calling people in. So if you hired three nurses, two hundred and ten thousand, that'd leave you a hundred ninety thousand. If you kept the four, four hundred thousand, the board say, go ahead and hire three nurses, take that out of the four hundred, you got a hundred ninety thousand left for other costs. Can you save that much money with three full-time nurses and not raise it over four hundred?
Now, the only thing.
Can you save enough costs? I'm just.
That's what I'm saying, to balance it out.
The only thing is, some of those dollars are really out of our control when we bring somebody in. We, Lynette and the judge does a great job trying to get those people released, so they're out. Sometimes we're stuck with them and, you know, if they have dialysis or, or they have some kind of surgery while they're in there because something happened, then we're stuck with the bill, and that's where some of these dollars come from. And that's why you had it, I think last year you took out roughly fifty thousand at, at the end of the year. You hurried and took it out because we were looking good in that end, if you remember, Dennis. We were long and you said, hey, I'm gonna move this because we only had like six weeks left, you know?
I know, various years later.
Right, exactly.
Somebody come have three heart care or three babies in there.
Exactly, we don't have any control over that.
That's a guess, okay, gentlemen, ma'am. That's a guess.
If you've got three nurses, all that four hundred, that'd leave you a hundred ninety. What'd that tell you, Sid? And then you're still staying at the four hundred, but you just gained three nurses and hope to get you through on a hundred ninety thousand on their cost.
Listen, I, I'd be, I'd be willing to take any amount of nurse, an additional.
Then you aren't raising your cost.
One.
Right, that's what I said too. If you can find some savings, you can maybe get a nurse.
Four hundred thousand.
Is there a reason you don't have nurse on the weekends?
We don't have the staff, I mean, we don't actually have nurses, Larry, so it just doesn't work out.
Well, if they're more important on the weekend, give them Monday off.
But it's not because they're dealing with all the stuff from over the weekend, plus setting up all of the, our medication and setting up doctors' orders. It's crazy on Mondays.
And we don't control.
Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday.
We don't control their days.
There's so much of that stuff that the nurse has to take care of.
You don't?
They're not our employees.
Working on the weekend, and so they're having to call and diagnose somebody, getting hold of our nursing, first the occupational, and, and say, hey, this inmate needs insulin, for instance.
So you're saying you don't want them on the weekends? Or they're not any good on the weekends?
No, I'm saying that we need coverage seven days a week, Larry, we truly do. And we're, we're spreading out the nurses as much as we can to cover the front, first thing in the morning, tell most of the med passes that get us through like nine, ten o'clock at night. And the way it is right now, that is not possible to have, you know, in the staff on the weekend. I think that's very important that they, that they're there. Truly, they, it would be nice to have a nurse twenty-four seven because they help with our assessments of medical problems when we first will come in. They help with our suicide, you know, after, after the nurses leave at nine o'clock, our officers are having to make that determination if this person is suicidal or not. If we have a nurse there, they help us liability, make that determination what we should do with that person. There's, I mean, you know, medical is such a huge liability force, that jail is such a huge liability. And the biggest thing I would say to you guys, and a federal judge said this to me a long time ago, is it's not a defense to not have the money to take care of them. You can't tell me, lieutenant, that you couldn't afford something, and that's what happens. And that's what I'm hearing, sitting back here, is that we can afford things, but liability wise, I, we're, we're just in big trouble on my feet.
Problem, the judge.
A lot, a lot of people can't afford things.
I understand.
But, but we end up in court. We end up in court.
I would like to point out that this list of counties you've got on here, this top eight here, with the exception of us, have nurses in their facility twenty-four seven.
But they have the ability to generate money and pay for.
She just said to you, when we get sued over something because we didn't have a nurse there, that's not an excuse.
Right. Court ties.
We understand that.
Can I ask you clarification? Can FICA, IFRS and some other benefits actually come out of the general supplemental fund instead of the general basic?
Uh, we are budgeting all the FICA and IFRS health, all the benefits, budgeting in the fund of levying the money in general sup. So yes, we are doing.
So you are using general sup to pay for all?
Paying for everything this year. Before, we reduced it by a million dollars because we had the holidays, we had a few extra reserves, but that does catch up, or we'll say it catches twenty-two dollars on natural reserves, reduce that levying that comes across. We're levying a full max for everything.
Okay, let's move on. We have a motion on the floor to lose three hundred and eleven thousand. Any further discussion?
I would just tell you that we're still, the budget is still increased by ten percent. And that's.
Because of the overtime, probably.
Because of the overtime.
And there's no way it's gonna stand that kind of increase.
I'm still willing to cut the thirty-seven thousand dollars. But no second to it, but anyway, let's go on. There was a paper about, of the motion to amend it by three hundred and eleven thousand, that's a million dollars.
Seven hundred eleven.
Seven hundred what? Did you hear they're saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?